Hello, are they working? Yep. Thank you, Jim. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our workshop meeting tonight. To get our meeting started, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. I'll do the roll call this evening. We have Otto.
Here.
Thomas is absent with notice. Westover is absent with notice. Instrom is here. Dockett.
Here.
Braun. And Chick. Great, thank you. That takes us on to adopt the balance of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from anyone? If anyone doesn't mind, I would like to add back on another discussion we had voted on it once before, but now that I'm looking around during the summer months and seeing all the different roundabouts, and we had voted to go with the soft landscaping, and wanted maybe just chat about maybe we should go with the hardscape. Does anyone have a problem with adding that and talking about that tonight?
As long as we're not voting on it, I don't want to add anything on that I can't study and read about. I don't want to just put it on there and vote. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, we'll put it on there to talk and then maybe we'll see what happens at that time.
Because I don't know how much money we're talking about. I don't know what kind of commitment we're talking about. I don't know anything, so I'm not going to vote on something I don't know anything about.
Right, all right. So I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, but that is number five as our agenda items. You guys discuss hardscape from roundabouts. So a motion for, on the amended agenda, thank you. Instrom motioned, and Chick supported. Those in favor?
All of them.
Aye.
What are we voting on?
The agenda.
After we've added on.
Yeah, I've added on number five, so a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, those in favor? Aye. Those oppose? Motion passes, thank you. That takes us on to our first call to the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to get up, share your thoughts. We do remind you that this is not a question and answer session. The board cannot respond to your thoughts, and we do limit you to three minutes. Do we have any speakers here this evening? Oh, come on up. Called the, okay, Mary, come on up.
I'm up here because, let me get my paperwork out. At my age, I have to write everything down so I don't forget anything. Okay. Number one, at the Northfield Township Board meeting on July 12th, the Northfield Neighbors were doing what they have done for months, which is verbally bash the board, the Planning Commission, and Northfield Township Manager. But at this meeting, they also specially went after the Township Treasurer, Kathy Braun, because of her article in the July issue of The Current. What amazes me is that they can dish it out, but when they are criticized, they don't like it. I would like to remind them that not everyone in this township has a short memory when it comes to the Northfield Neighbors. Number two, the other day, we received a card in the mail addressed to local poster customer, sent by nn.tech. I'm sure you can figure out what that nn stands for, but I will tell you in a minute. They had a partial list of candidates running for office on the front of the card. On the back was more complaining about the township, for instance, about the new boardroom, which, by the way, is more professional, the lighting is better, and the acoustics are better. Another issue was the tax abatement for the new company that Howard has worked so hard to have here, and they are only guessing at the number of jobs to be available. The list goes on with negative remarks about 3% of townships having managers. They failed to indicate that a large number of townships have a population of less than 6,000 population. The reason to have a township manager means more financially efficient, and this township was close to default about eight years ago, and need, I need to say who was on the board at that time, and now we are financially sound, to coin a phrase. Getting back to what nn.tech stands for is Northfield Neighbors Today Election Committee, whose treasurer is David Gordon and Susan Schink is record keeper. My thought is this: Why had they not filed their financial disclosure by the deadline, which was last Friday? So I'm just asking everybody, please be careful when you go to the polls and know whom you're voting for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers this evening? Yeah, go ahead.
By the way, this is the card that was received. It is garbage. This is what we do with garbage.
Thank you. Anyone else? Our next speaker?
My name's David Gordon. I'm with Northfield Neighbors, and to answer Mary's question, I screwed up the deadline on filing, and I filed this afternoon instead of Friday and paid a $50 fine as a result, so you can find all the documents online if you wish. In terms of who's financing Northfield Neighbors Today PAC, I'd encourage everybody to vote on August 2nd because the positions of clerk and treasurer will be decided next Tuesday, and I believe we need some new people who ask questions and make better decisions. Madam Supervisor, again, at the last meeting, you continued spreading lies about me, about Northfield Neighbors, and about our website, northfieldneighbors today. Unfortunately, you were joined by the treasurer, clerk, and manager. You say that Northfield Neighbors is disgusting and makes you sick, to quote you, and then said, of course, you've never actually visited the site. If you had the guts to deal with even the least amount of criticism and visited the site, you'd see that every single fact is documented. There are links from every story to the minutes of these meetings and the videos from them. There might be editorializing that you dislike, but the facts are the facts, and the residents can check them out for themselves. It's not an opinion that the treasurer and this board lost $450,000 by selling bonds. It's a fact. And here's the problem: Apparently, you think the taxpayer's job is to be cheerleaders. If we so much as criticize your actions, we get attacked for it, and maybe that's why so few people ever show up on a regular, at these regular meetings. Northfield Neighbors Today is acting as the watchdog of this community, keeping the residents informed about your actions, which is important and an honored American tradition. Usually, it's the local paper that takes on this role, but the Koran didn't bother to report the $450,000 loss. What the Koran did was get you all elected, and now it's telling the voters that everything is just hunky-dory and we should reelect you, all of you. What makes me sick is seeing the newspaper in bed with the politicians. Madam Supervisor, here's what you said at the last meeting, quote, "Mr. Gordon, I heard you get up here, and you stood here, and you said, 'I will stop the Whitmore Lake Special Assessment District at all costs because it's another tool out of my toolbox, and once again, you will do anything to hurt anyone in this township for your own gain.'" That's a direct quote from you, madam. Number one, I never said it. I know I didn't say it because I've never even thought it, and I checked the tapes of all those SAD meetings and confirmed it. It's not there. Plus, it doesn't even make any sense, but it is ugly, and that's how you treat folks that disagree with you. That toolbox reference is from an online posting that I never wrote, but which makes me look bad, and which you decided to send out to every member of the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees. I have a copy of it. It's dated July 15, 2014. First, you sent it to the Township Manager, asking if he would like to distribute it. Smartly, he refused. Unfortunately, he didn't counsel you to maybe check out whether I actually wrote that. I'd sue you over, but it's not worth the trouble. Last, you also said that I will hurt anyone for my gain. I don't know what gain you're talking about. I donated everything I ever made when I was serving as a trustee for four years back to this community. You're the one collecting $50,000. And I will hurt anyone? The only thing I've ever done is protect my home and my neighborhood and alert the residents to unwanted zonings and attacks on the master plan. You know the document that you didn't participate in writing and that you probably haven't even read. You need to stop lying because you're mixing up your lies. The community deserves better than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Oh, come on up.
Chick, is that where we are? Good evening. My name is Ton Bellager, and I'm happy to be here this evening. Regarding the agenda items tonight, we've got People's Express, the Fire Department Capital Improvement Plan, Main Street Sidewalk Project, repaving of the parking lot at 75 Barker. My only concern is about, always about spending. I tend to like to go back to the issue of spending. I would like to make sure that these issues, the agenda items, that we can do our best to keep them at a balance, so that as we increase spending on these different issues, maybe we can decrease in places that are perhaps we don't feel are as important at this time, resulting in hopefully a budget-neutral situation without a tax increases. So this is pretty much what I'm getting at. So regarding the People's Express, that's a great idea. I understand it'll get a lot of support. I just would like it to not cost, obviously, us anymore. So if we're going to add to the increasing People's Express by any chance, decrease somewhere else, you know, without raising taxes. And that goes for the other items, like anything, that we're doing in the township. But that's about it. I wish everybody who's running the best of luck, and everybody get out there and vote August 2nd, and I wish everybody well, and have a wonderful evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for call to the public this evening? All right. Any board member comments at this time? Go ahead, Wayne.
Yes, I'd like to know from Howard, in the past, when we voted on to have a limit on these presentations. I want to know if Howard mentioned it to whoever is having this, and what is the limit tonight on this presentation? We voted to have that done. Howard has ignored it right along, so did you counsel somebody on how long this is for? How long is it?
I said, try not to let it go.
I can't hear you, Howard.
I told the gentleman, try not to let it go over 15 minutes.
Thank you very much.
I'd like the board to authorize that if the gentleman goes over 15 minutes, that it's not an issue.
Well, I'd like you to pay attention to what we voted on. That's what we voted on, so, you know, but you never, you never go this far after we voted on, so I think it's, I think it's important. I come here to, I've been here already, on Howard already, for meetings. I think it's fair to have a timer on these things. Thank you.
I'm sure everyone will do their best, but I don't think that's something to spoil such a wonderful presentation that's going to happen, okay? If they happen to go over to 15 minutes, we'll be fine.
I didn't hear you. What was that?
If they happen to go over 15 minutes, I'm sure we'll be fine.
Well, I would like to have a vote on it, then, because I won't be fine on it.
Any correspondence and announcements?
The only correspondence announcement that I have is that the MDOT has requested a, a, MDOT has requested to purchase right away from us for the US-23 project related to the Van Kurler property. As soon as we have ownership of the Van Kurler property, and also, and I'm still waiting on it, and I'm not happy as to the delay, but as soon as I have the survey, then we'll begin entertaining the issue of the MDOT request for the right-of-way. It's a pretty insignificant piece that won't impact anything that we're looking to do. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Would it be a fair price, Howard? I mean, would it be money, or, I mean, if they want the property, are they going to pay for it, or?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other correspondence or announcements? No? All right, well, our first presentation of the evening is a flag presentation ceremony from the Val Drews family to the Fire Department. We have Deputy Chief Bishop here, Mr. Bill Wagner, and Bill Burton in the audience, and we can get started. And thank you for everyone for coming. It's nice to see everyone's fresh faces here.
Come on up, Mr. Burton. As most of you probably know, a couple of weeks ago, we lost a longtime member of the community, icon in the community, and a 25-year-plus veteran of the Fire Department, Val Drews passed away, and so the, and most of the family is here, as you see. A well-respected man in the community, did a lot of good things for the people in the community, so as tradition, sometimes they'll ask the Fire Department for some assistance during the funeral, and so we helped the morning of the funeral, leading the procession from the funeral home up there in Hamburg, all the way out to St. Pat's Church, and then during the service and during the procession over to the cemetery, we put our ladder truck up with a large flag, like you've seen us do during the Fourth of July events. It's just something we do for firefighter funerals and retired firefighter funerals. So Mr. Burton here noticed that our flag was a little tattered and faded, and actually offered to purchase a new fire department for the flag, and we will certainly gratefully accept that flag and fly it with a very proud in honor of Val Drews. So, Mr. Burton, you want to say a couple words?
Sure. Thank you very much, and I'd really like to just say thank you to the Northfield Township Fire Department First Responders for Val's service. It was just an awesome sight that you guys provided for not only the community, but for the family. And in Val's memory, because of the shape of the flag, it was a little bit discolored and stuff, I thought, what a great thing to have there for Val, and hopefully, it won't get used a lot. But it's something that I think Val would be very proud of, and I'm sure his family would be also. So on behalf of Val and his family, I want to donate to this, to the Township Fire Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and if you want to present it. And just a real quick history, we've never been able to afford to purchase a brand-new flag, and so that flag that we actually had there had been donated to us, and Shelley Manning actually repaired that flag for us so that it was somewhat presentable, and so this is, and previous funerals before that flag, we actually borrowed flags from area departments, so I'm very proud that we'll have one for the Northfield Township Fire Department, and we will get a little something that, when we're displaying that, that is in honor of Val Drews. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. That takes us on to our next presentation of the evening, and that is the Michigan Broadband Welcome.
So I want to be very respectful of everybody's time, so I will begin speaking while the projector warms up. Thank you, everybody, for taking the time to speak with me tonight, and I'll say I'm blissfully ignorant of politics in this part of Washtenaw County, but what I can tell is that everyone in this room is very passionate about your community, and I think that's really amazing. I've been to a lot of township meetings, and the passion here tonight is more than I'm used to seeing, so congratulations on that. So my name is Ben Feynman. I represent the Michigan Broadband Cooperative. I am also a Washtenaw County resident in Linden Township, which is three townships to the west, and this is not the right presentation. The Michigan Broadband Cooperative is a nonprofit, all-volunteer grassroots organization, and I think it's important to understand where we're coming from, in that we're not trying to sell anybody anything. We're trying to address a problem that we identified in our own community in the western part of Washtenaw County, which is the lack of broadband connectivity. So our nonprofit mission is to build community-controlled broadband infrastructure for underserved areas of Michigan. And I know most of you can't see the presentation, but this is the list of our board members, and as you can see, we're residents of various townships throughout Washtenaw County, and actually, one township in Jackson County, and we're all just residents trying to make something happen. And this is my motivation, you know, people ask me why I devote my time to this. It's really for my kids, and my kids today don't have broadband at home, and I know once they get to be school age, it's really going to become necessary for them, and so, you know, everybody, everybody has a secret motivation. This is my secret motivation, so that's what I'm here for. So I'm going to go really fast through these slides because there's a lot of content. What is broadband? Broadband is the way that you connect to the internet, and it's not just for entertainment. It's not just a luxury service anymore. It's really essential to our, as essential to our way of life as electricity was 100 years ago, and it's, there are a lot of main things that people need it for. The thing we hear over and over in our communities is the homework gap, and so students who need to have broadband to complete their homework assignments, if they don't have it, they end up in the parking lot at McDonald's, or at the Chelsea Library, or wherever they can find free Wi-Fi at 10 o'clock at night, so they can upload their homework assignment. We hear over and over that people have trouble selling their homes when the buyers find out that there's no broadband available, and we've done some studies in this regard. It turns out homes without broadband are actually valued, on average, 20% less than homes that do have broadband, and so that's a significant hardship for those people who don't have broadband. And it's just a basic quality of life issue, not just for people with kids, not just for home equity. We hear from seniors in our communities who have adult children and grandchildren and might like to video chat and Skype with their grandchildren, and they can't do it because they don't have broadband, or they go see their medical professionals, and they get sent home with electronic medical records that they can't access from home because they don't have broadband. So it's really important for people, all kinds of different people. And so where are we now in terms of broadband? I moved from Superior Township, where I had Comcast Cable, and at that time, I didn't realize there were people in Washtenaw County that did not have broadband, and if you have broadband here, you probably might not have thought about that there are people in Northfield Township that don't have broadband, and this is, this is surprising to a lot of people because there's all these service providers available in Washtenaw County, but, and if you look at Northfield Township in particular, this is a coverage map maintained by an organization called Connect Michigan. If you take DSL and cable and cellular and satellite, you have 100% coverage in Northfield Township, so, you know, why should we even talk about this? The first issue is anybody with a cellular data plan knows about data caps, and data caps are this thing where they charge you for how much you use the service, and if you're trying to run your home on a data cap service, I won't go through this in particular, but if you try to do normal things that people like to do with the internet, it's going to cost you over $6,000 a month in data overages. So cellular and satellite are not really viable solutions. If you take that away, then we're left with cable and DSL, and DSL is certainly better than nothing, but the FCC defines broadband as speeds of 25 megabits or more. DSL doesn't even make that, so DSL is no longer fast enough to be considered broadband, and there are studies to support the need for this 25-megabit threshold, and also studies that show how bandwidth needs are increasing at a rapid pace year over year. So if we take away DSL, then we're just left with cable. So Northfield Township still looks pretty good when it comes to cable coverage. You have this part in the southwest that shows is not covered. It turns out this coverage map is widely over-reported because the data comes from the providers themselves, and we've done some studies in Dexter Township. So this is the coverage reported in Dexter Township. When we actually did the study, this is what it actually looks like. The red is the, are the areas that were reported as being covered that aren't actually covered. So I'm willing to bet that Northfield Township coverage is actually a lot worse than the state map shows. And so how do we get coverage for those people who don't have it? Well, the easiest thing to do would be to get the big carriers to come and deploy it, and so, you know, we've talked to them, and they're just not going to do it because they're for-profit companies, they need a return on investment that the population densities in these rural areas cannot provide, so they aren't going to help us. So that's why, in the western part of the county, we came to the conclusion that we needed this grassroots effort. If we want this done, we're going to have to do it ourselves as citizens, and so if we're going to do something, the technology to deploy is fiber optic, fiber to the home. And the main thing here is speed and future-proofing. I know many of you can't see the graph, but fiber is orders of magnitude faster than any of the other technologies. If you've heard of Google Fiber, this is the same technology Google uses. Google Fiber's not coming here, but we can still build the same technology that they use. There are examples of Michigan communities who have done exactly this. Seabwing, Michigan, built fiber to the home for every, every household in their village, 1,700 residents, and they now offer gigabit service to any household that wants it. And this is not a unique thing to Michigan. There are over 450 communities around the country who have done these kinds of municipal fiber optic deployments, and so we're not trying to do something new and crazy. We're doing something that's becoming more and more common throughout the United States. People are taking action, taking things into their own hands. So what's the process if we actually want to do this? So the first step in where we are in Northfield Township is assessing community need and support. Basically, in other areas, we've done surveys to determine if people are significantly lacking in broadband, if they want to see something done about it as a community. We have had contacts from residents in Northfield, so I know there is a need here, but we haven't done any surveys, so I can't tell you how much.
We have.
You have?
We, we, we were part of Gretchen's initial.
Oh, you were?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry I didn't pull the data then, because we do have that data.
It's okay.
So yes, there is survey data, and I'm sure it shows that there's, there's some need.
It shows that there's, there's no connectivity or very limited connectivity in the rural areas.
Right, yep.
Which is what we generally, no.
Yep, it's, yeah, it's what we all know. And so once we determine there's need, then the next step that we're suggesting is conducting a feasibility study, or, sorry, so this is the assessing need part. This is my porch, yes, or last week, opening envelopes of surveys from people in Linden Township, so it's a manual process. But the feasibility study, we have interviewed a number of consulting firms. The one we're using primarily right now is called Pulse Broadband. There's another one called CTC that Ann Arbor Township is looking at. Doesn't matter who the firm is, but these firms conduct a study to see how financially and practically viable the project is. In Linden Township, to run fiber to every house in the township, it's a $6.8 million project. Not a small number, but they also came to the conclusion that it's a viable project because everybody's paying for broadband already. I'm paying $150 a month to Verizon, so, you know, paying something else is not a problem for me. So it's a viable project. There are a lot of questions that came out of the feasibility study that we're digging down into. I won't go into those now. Funding is the hard part, right? If we had funding, this would be done already. So some townships have a lot of money and do this out of the general fund. That's pretty uncommon. In Linden Township, we're talking about doing a bond backed by a millage, and we've done surveys because, you know, millages are controversial, nobody likes taxes, but so far, we're seeing 75% of registered voters in support of a millage for broadband. So there's a big need, and people are willing to pay for it. In other townships like Dexter and Webster, where there is significant existing coverage, they're looking at special assessment districts, and so that might be something to look at for Northfield Township.
Well, if the legislation allows for it.
Right. Currently, legislation does not actually allow for special assessment districts for broadband, but that's something we're working on. And so for Linden Township, if we did it for the whole township, it'd be 3.7 mills to do, do it with a millage, and I won't go through the details of this, but basically, it comes out, it's an advantage for the township residents. It's better than anything they have available today, and less expensive. In the total cost of ownership, this is the study that we did on home values. It basically shows that we took eight ZIP codes around, in the area with broadband and eight without, and there was a 20.9% difference in the past 20 years of how much those properties have appreciated. So there is a real difference with the connectivity. And so what that looks like in practical terms, I'll skip to the last one, so the average Linden Township home, it would cost them $7,600 over 20 years in taxes. So that's a lot, but their home value would increase by 43... So, that's a lot, but their home value would increase by $43,000. So, it's a big equity gain even if you ignore the, you know, all the benefits of actually having broadband connectivity. So, assuming all that's done, you build it, the, we formed the Michigan Broadband Cooperative to enable townships to work together. You know, Linden's doing something, Dexter's doing something, Webster's doing something. We don't want every township to have to reinvent the wheel and do their own independent thing. So, this cooperative again is a nonprofit and provides a vehicle for the townships to work together with this kind of project. And the last, I'll leave you with this map, this is kind of where we are. Linden is the only one who's completed their feasibility study, Dexter and Webster are working on theirs right now, I actually just saw a draft of Webster's last night. Sharon Township and Ann Arbor Township are pending funding for their feasibility studies, they're, they're still talking about it. So, Ann Arbor Township in particular, there may be an opportunity to work with them, go together on a feasibility study, things like that. So, that's where we're at. That's my email address, we have a website, happy to take questions if there's time.
Uh, there's time. Fifteen minutes only covers the actual presentation.
Sure.
According to Mr. Doherty.
Understood.
Any questions?
The only question I had is if you're putting it into a millage, that, that doesn't, that's in addition to having to pay for the broadband services in addition to that, right?
Yes, and I skipped over those slides really fast. For the average Linden Township homeowner, it's like, it comes out to $30 a month roughly for the millage and we're projecting the service would cost $50 a month. So, really, you're paying $80 a month.
Okay.
But also, as I mentioned, a lot of us are already paying 100, $150 a month, so it doesn't look so bad.
Well, I know in Northfield Township, there are areas where there is no broadband connection because they can't get dial-up, they can't get charter or cable, so they don't have any opportunities at all.
Yep, and those are the most important areas to address, for sure.
Are we, Madam Supervisor? Are we taking questions from the audience? Okay.
In this case, would you be able to take another couple? Will they, will they come up to the mic?
Yeah, please come, yeah, come up to the mic so that everyone can hear you.
With, with the existing cable companies, if you don't like your service, if it goes down at prime time, you can compete with other companies. So, what options would you have in this case if your service goes down or if your bandwidth isn't what it's supposed to be?
So, you raised two good points. For most of the, the places in the area that actually have service, they only have one choice for cable. There are hardly any homes that have the choice between Charter or Comcast out here. So, today, if, if you're unhappy with your charter service, well, mostly too bad. But the, the second good point that you raised is that ideally, we would like to have what's called an open access network. So, the important part is for the community to control that cable that runs to the house. And then, after that, we don't really care who provides service over it. In fact, we would love it for three or four or five different companies to provide service over that cable because then you have that competitive marketplace that you allude to. Now, in reality, if we're only doing one township, it's probably not going to be enough to attract four or five providers, so we'll probably start with one, maybe two, but the, that vision is what we'd like to do in the long term.
There was a question in the back, I guess we are taking questions, or there's a question in the back if you wanted to.
I am in the, on the southeast corner, Township 1, South Range 6 East. And we've been talking to Comcast business, they, because we run a business out of our home, so they've considering expanding out here. After I talked to Charter and Charter refused to provide service, apparently the FCC allows for other companies to come in in that case, so. It would be a very, very expensive build-out, but that's what we're looking at in our corner. Thank you.
Just so everyone knows, the township has nothing in place to, to discourage competition. The markets are completely open, anyone can come into any of the markets in Michigan. The only thing that is required is that they sign a franchise agreement with the township. The franchise agreement with the township is actually set by the state, there's really no negotiation that's involved, it's set by the state as to what the document is and what the terms of the, of the franchise agreement are. In fact, actually, in truth and fact, that's what has created the problem that we're in is that the state came down and basically set these determined franchise agreements which effectively limit the ability of the townships and local governments to put pressure on the providers to expand the infrastructure. And frankly, the reason for that is because the lobby in Lansing on the telecommunications side and cable side and these kind of issues are so large and so massive that, and that's how these things ended up happening. So, if you call Comcast, or excuse me, in our, in our area, it's Charter, right? Charter, right? Yeah, if you call Charter, Charter will happily run the line to your house, okay? The problem is, is that they won't run the line to your house on their dime. They may say, okay, well, the closest line is a quarter of a mile away, it'll cost you $50,000 to get the line to your house and you're welcome to go find a bunch of your neighbors if they want to hook up along the way. They won't hook you up unless you have, unless they have a better than two-year return on investment for the putting of their infrastructure in. So, what we have is a, is a gap in the marketplace. There is nothing in the market that will provide a financial incentive for infrastructure to be run. So, for those who say and look to the market to solve these kind of problems, the issue is in fact the market. And so, that's where folks like Ben and, and other folks around the country and where I used to come from, people were talking about it as well, is look at what are alternatives to run cable and obviously, somebody has to pay for that cable and, and somebody has to service it, be the ISP and all that. So, that's really what Ben and his group is talking about. And so, this is really a con, just so the board knows why we're talking about this, this is a conversation that's been going on at the county for quite some time, I've been involved in a number of presentations and conversations related to it. And a number of communities have essentially said, let's actually move forward and, and looked at a feasibility study and to see what it would take. I'm not suggesting you do that or not do that, I'm not even such suggesting do anything today, but I wanted to ask Ben to come and give a presentation as to what was going on in the rest of the county and, and what the issues are. I just want, I want to manage the expectation, the, the solution is not pressure on Charter or Comcast or AT&amp;T because that gets you nowhere. People have been trying that for years, I tried that in a former community and it literally gets you nowhere. About the closest anyone has come, which was what we learned about, what, last week, and I forget what township it was, where they actually got a number out of Charter as to how much it would cost to get service throughout the whole community, that's the closest anyone's come into any kind of cooperation. So, anyway, just a little background.
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I also wanted to comment that the other reason to have, be having this conversation is that for seven years on the Planning Commission, we've had several people come up and step up to the podium and, and say that, you know, when are we going to get this in our township? And I think this is good information so that they can see and we understand exactly what the cost is and what the project is like. So, there is an interest here, especially in the rural areas, so thank you for doing that.
Ms. Jager?
I, I think another opportunity to do a survey is, is because we are coming up with our master plan. This is a good opportunity to raise questions in the survey for the next master plan to see where we, where we can land with having some type of millage or some type of support within the community to have broadband in the community.
And that's a great idea, that's exactly what Linden did is they included questions with their master plan survey. So, I, I would be happy to share those.
The one thing that I would, I would say and, and I can, I can watch it and, and kind of give you updates is to kind of watch what Ann Arbor Township does, maybe have a conversation with Ann Arbor Township this week or next week and, and see what they end up doing. They end up moving forward on a feasibility, it may be prudent to look at what would a feasibility cost in Northfield and see if there's any economies of scale there if it was something you wanted to do. And that's if.
All right. Thank you for coming out this evening, I don't think we have any further questions unless anyone in the audience has anything. All right. Thank you so much, appreciate it. We'll obviously talk about this in our further meetings in the future and see if there's anything that we can start talking about further.
So, that takes us on to our agenda items, thank you for the Drough family for coming out tonight. Our agenda items, the People's Express, we had our presentation last week, it's on the agenda to talk about some more, does anyone have any thoughts? I have some things that I'd like to say, anyone want to chime in?
Now, is this on our agenda to vote on or is it just a discussion item?
I, I'm waiting, you know, I guess I'm looking for some, some direction from you guys of, you know, if you want to vote on it, I mean.
Well, we could, but I'd rather see it on a regular meeting to vote on.
Yeah, so would I.
What are you voting on?
No, she asked if we were voting on the People's Express contract and I said, well, I was looking for some direction from you guys of what you wanted to do because it's, you know, a workshop, we, you know, try not to vote.
Is that where we're at right now?
We are, yeah, correct. You know, and, you know, my thoughts are, you know, I'm still uncomfortable with the funding for transportation as I have in the past, you know, I love what they do, but, you know, to use our township dollars, you know, for, you know, this transportation, I just think it should be more done on a county level. So, those are just my thoughts, I'm still, I'm still uncomfortable with it. Wayne, go ahead, please.
I had experience with the express thing. I have a friend of mine who worked for me who went to prison and when he came out, he didn't have a driver's license or anything. So, I, I happen to live next door to, to the place, so I tried to get him in order to get to work and back and all. He had to call three days ahead of time, it was eight bucks, if he missed a thing, I mean, I don't think it was good for the money they charged. You know, they, I, I would not support those whatsoever. I, I had the personal experience with it. So, I mean, I don't understand if, if I want to go to a doctor appointment or I want to go to a grocery store, I got to call three days ahead of time to set this thing up? It's a, it's a, it's not what you think it is. Give it a try, you'll find out, thank you.
I do want to say though, that there are people that do not have transportation available to them and they do have to work around going to doctor appointments whether they have a family member that takes them, they have to work around their schedule, whether they have a taxi cab come and get them, they have to pay out considerably for that, that option. And then, some of these people are on fixed incomes that can't afford $50 round trips or $60 round trips. I think that they would, you know, it's more up to the people that, that are using the service that you have to ask, was it of value to you? And if it's of value to them and this is, it's giving it back to the community plus federal dollars are being added to this, which are, which are increasing the number of people that are, have availability for a ride. So, county, I, I understand that you, we want to, it's the county level that needs to take care of us, but they aren't.
Have you used it? Have you called them, you ever used it?
I don't have to use them because I have my own car.
I mean, give it a try, see what you think, you know, maybe we're better off to call a taxi cab and give them 20 bucks to take the person somewhere. You know, I mean, there's other, there's other ways to do this, I don't think it's of value. That's my opinion, thank you.
It's of value to the people that use it, I mean, 20 bucks, two ways is $40, these people are only paying $5 or $7. I don't know why the township wouldn't want to help our seniors or people that are disabled that can't get around. And, you know, we're making a donation, so is the, the, hello, government, yeah, so.
It's coming out of our general fund.
It is, but it's, right.
People are getting a return for their tax dollars.
I think we can do it better.
But like, how many out of all the?
Last year, we gave them $10,000. Give, give it to somebody else this year, see how that works.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Well, that, that was just my concern, that there's an increase being asked for, I think the county now kicks in 20,000, we kicked in another 10, they're asking for another 5. I heard the number, 1,500 rides, how many people is that? Is that the same 100 people? There are 8,500 people in this township, how special is this interest? That's all I'm asking, how special is interest? Are there any documents or anything kept of how many different people? We might be better off taking that $15,000 and, and hiring a car service through the township.
I don't think you're going to get transportation for $15,000 in our, and I, and I think the contract's only for Tom, I don't see it.
Yeah, she didn't ask for an increase.
She didn't ask for.
In the contract.
Yeah, if you read the contract, it's only for Tom, so it is.
Did she ask for 15?
No, she said she'd take more.
But she only asked for 10.
Well, 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 she putting the contract is sort of not accurate. We, we gave, we put this contract in the package since it's the same contract from last year. Because we're not renegotiating the contract. We spent a bunch of time negotiating the contract last year, going through the legal issues, so it was $10,000. Last year, I put the contract in at $10,000, so that has no bearing on what Lenore's asking for.
And I felt.
I assumed she was asking for $10,000.
Well, and if she.
Oh, I see.
She'd take more, but since that hasn't been presented.
Well, double, double or triple it, give it to her then, if she takes more, give her all she needs. Why stop it then?
Well, you know what I would do is, and this is what I'm going to say, I'm, those in our community that use the service, if we're going to put it on the agenda for the next board meeting, I would welcome them to participate in the audience and to at least let each of the board members have some feedback as to why they need the service.
That's a good idea, I'll agree to that.
So, we'll put it on next meeting?
Sure, okay, sounds good.
All right. That takes us on to number two of our agenda items, which is the Fire Department Capital Improvement Plan that we've talked about with Mr. Wagner before.
The only question that really came up coming into that I had to do a little research on was kind of the method of payment or payment plan. And it's really up to us. And so, again, it takes about a year to build a fire truck once we sign the agreement. And the recommendation that I got, which I don't always take a recommendation from a salesman, but he was actually talking for us, is that if you do something like 50% down and then you hold that next 50%, you have something to hold over their head to make sure the truck gets finished how you want it, when you want it. So, that's kind of what the direction we were thinking. And it, it's, it costs anywhere between if you, no cost, if you pay it all upfront versus maybe $7,000 to $9,000 in finance fees if you weren't to pay anything until, it'd be $9,000. So, if we paid half, it would probably be $3,000, $4,000, $4,500 that it would cost in finance fees for the.
So, let me just step in real quick, if, if the board decides based on Mr. Wagner's recommendation and I recommend that the board authorize the expenditure as well, I would recommend an authorization of $125,000 out of this, $125,000 allocation this year and an additional $125,000 when, at the balance of the fire truck delivery for a total of $250,000 of which 125 will be transferred, you know, within the next month or so.
So, that's out of the general fund and then the remaining portion would come out of the fire department fund balance?
And the money's coming out of the general fund?
Correct.
I would like to see this on a, on a ballot for a bond. I, I can't understand why, you know, we, we give the fire department $750,000, thereabouts, to run the fire department, they never stay within their budget, we give them at least $50,000 a year of the fund out of the general. We give them at least $50,000 a year of the fund, out of the general fund. Now we're talking about giving them $250,000 out of the general fund. I mean, how do you put any restraints on these people? You let them go in front of the people, the Vogus, that pay the bill, and let them go for mileage. If the people want to give them the mileage, spend all you want. But I'm against taking it out of the general fund.
Anyone else? Any comments, thoughts?
Was there any more questions on the actual capital improvement plan that I had presented? I can't answer anything.
Where is the capital improvement plan?
That, we went over that.
I don't see anything in here.
Should have been in your packet.
It's in your packet.
And actually, it was, we went over it at the two board meetings ago.
So this is the unfortunate thing with the Fire Department. It would be different if all we're paying for is paper clips and Xerox paper, but we aren't. We have huge equipment that we have to maintain, that we have to purchase, that have to be used to support anybody, any fire, any accident that happens in our community. All this equipment needs to be maintained and that is why there's a high dollar amount. It isn't because we have gold paper clips or we have 30-pound Xerox paper that we're purchasing all the time. It has to do with the type of equipment that we have to have for a Fire Department. That's all I'm saying.
Where is the, I don't see any, where's this money coming from for?
The general fund.
All of it's coming from the general.
One of your $50,000 would be a general fund allocation.
Yeah, well, I'm not.
Not all of it. There would be monies that would come out of the Fire Department fund and from the sale of existing trucks.
Yes. But what's wrong with mileage? Thank you.
So I can appreciate the fact, Chief Wagner, that you are actually downsizing an equipment and purchasing equipment that's better quality and less maintenance. And I would like to know, what is the MABS tanker task force?
So the MABS is, it's an organization that, it's a mutual aid automatic box alarm system is what it's called. So it's a preset unit of trucks that responds to large fires or large disasters. It could be a local large MABS tanker task force, which would be, let's say, a barn fire in a rural area where our real large need is for water because there is no rural, you know, water supply. So we have to bring water to the fire, so to speak. So there's a preset set of tankers. We are, actually, we're not part of it in the Livingston County because we don't have any tankers that qualify because we don't carry enough water. But in the northern part of Washtenaw County, we have, we are part of that tanker task force. And then, then there's even a larger national disaster type of MABS that we're also part of where if Hurricane Katrina or something like that, where they needed a tanker task force in, actually, that's not a good example, maybe something up by Lansing, some large disaster by Lansing, we would participate with other tankers from Washtenaw County to take a tanker up to Lansing. And these are all preset in place so that you don't scramble trying to bring all these things together. It's one phone call and we have two hours to get to Lansing or we have, you know, eight hours to get to Indianapolis or something like that.
So this is saying that because we don't hold enough water, our tankers don't carry enough water, that we can't participate in that tanker task force?
Right.
Okay. So our current tankers only carry 1,800 gallons of water and the accepted amount is 2,500?
Right.
Okay.
And again, we're taking and combining two trucks. As you mentioned, we're downsizing our fleet, but we're combining apparatus. And so we started with, when I was here, when I started, 12 or 13 pieces of apparatus and we're going down to about eight pieces of apparatus.
Is there any funding or any dollar advantage of being part of MABS?
If we go, we qualify for reimbursement through the federal government.
Okay.
If it becomes a national disaster. And also, I think I mentioned at that last meeting, we still are, again, I'm not real confident we're going to get it, we are still in the running for federal funding for this tanker that we're requesting also.
I want to thank you, Bill, for being proactive and, you know, looking at our equipment and the cost to maintain and stuff like that. I'm willing to put forward a motion to approve the Northfield Township Fire Department Apparatus Replacement Plan as presented on 7/26/16. $125,000 out of allocation for this year and another $125,000 at the completion of the truck, which would probably be approximately one year over.
It'll probably be close to 14 months. It'll take us two months to prepare and get ready to put the truck out to bid. And that will all come back before the board also.
All right. Thanks, you. Ingstrom motioned and Bron supported. Those in favor?
Roll call vote.
Sure. Chick.
Yes.
Bron. Docket?
No, because I don't like the way it's financed is what I'm doing it.
Ingstrom, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to do it tonight so that, well, I don't think we need to do it tonight for purposes of time, but as I've talked about in the past with the Van Kurler purchase and the fire truck purchase, we're going to need to look at the fund balance policy.
Okay. All right. That takes us on to agenda item number three, the Main Street Sidewalk Project.
So the Main Street Sidewalk Project is a project that we've been working on for about a year and a half, two years now. It is actually ready for construction. There is no money being paid for out of the general fund. There is no dollars coming out of the township's coffers, but I do would like, I would like a vote of approval tonight because I do want to update you on the cost of the project. We had had about $68,000 in unspent community development block grant funds through the county. The total project cost came in higher than anyone had expected at $159,893, which means that our allocation at the community development block grant, county allocation for roughly nine years will be taken up with this project. I still recommend moving forward. I think it's a very good project. Essentially, the project is so that the children don't have to walk in the street when they're headed to the Whitmore Lake Middle School. I realize that the Whitmore Lake Middle School is not functioning through the Whitmore Lake School District, but there is still school activities going on there. And I still believe that it's a valuable project. And there are no dollars coming out of the general fund. So with that, I suggest and recommend moving forward and approval and if we do so tonight, tomorrow, we'll give the go-ahead and construction will begin.
Go ahead, Wayne.
I have no idea why we are doing this when we have no Northfield Township children going to school there. Why are we paying out? I understand that the money's a grant, $160,000. We're using up whatever, some kind of a grant that we would be getting over the next nine years. But to me, to spend $160,000 on a closed school, on a school that Northfield Township doesn't have anything to do with, it just doesn't make sense to me. I think we could do better with our money. So I would be asking for a roll call vote. I'm not going to support this.
I do want to add that the school is being used for people who are in Northville Township. There is the.
None of them are walking. Not one of them's walking.
You don't know that.
You don't know that.
I know that, I watch.
Okay. So there is the early childhood center that is there and those are for people who are low income. Even the children, and you don't know if any of the children are going to the charter school that is there, that are local. You don't know.
And just all the other activities, they hold there, you know, after-school sports.
After-school sports, the gym is used constantly.
Oh, it's booked salad.
So.
The schools should be paying for it.
I would think just even for the safety of the community.
The schools should be paying, the schools should be paying, not the township.
Well, it's not on the school property, it's on, it's on community property. It's sidewalks, it's easements.
I think it's a good project. Whether the school's there or not, it's an expansion of our sidewalk infrastructure. I think it's a good.
And we're improving the quality of our community.
I mean.
I mean, the next sidewalk that really should be looked at is on East Shore.
And those should be 24, not 10, or 8, or whatever you're putting in there. We put 10-foot everywhere else. Why are you putting a 8-foot or 6-foot, wherever you're putting there? It doesn't make sense to me.
Howard, that grant for the nine years that we're using, is it, can it be used for anything else or is it specifically for sidewalks or sidewalk?
Oh, no. It can be used for a lot of things, but it has to be used in a low moderate income census tract. And actually, one of our census tracts has actually switched over recently and become a low moderate income census tract. And it's the, actually, it's the area where this project is located. But at the time that we started this project, it was not a low mod income census tract. And we had to do a survey and it took us probably about seven months to get the survey to comply and go knocking on doors, door to door at the apartment complex and throughout the area. You know, is, could we have created a different project now that there's a low mod income census tract expansion in the township? May there have been more impact? I don't disagree, yes. But when we started the project two years ago to do this, and it was a good project then, I think it's still a good project now, is there a better project today? Probably. But, you know, if we stop now and we go back to the drawing board. Huh? Nothing will ever get done. Well, exactly. I mean, you know, I see Mr. Docket's point and I, there's part of me that even agrees with it. But here we have an opportunity to make a community improvement today with dollars that we have and dollars that we can borrow for from the future as opposed to going back to the drawing board and potentially being another year or two from some kind of construction. But to answer your question directly, yes, there are other uses for the funds and they're vast because if you're in a low mod census tract, there are other uses. So I don't know if that.
Well, that doesn't mean a sidewalk down East Shore.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, let me just say this. I am on record in public, I support a sidewalk on East Shore. My wife has walked East Shore many times with Elliot. It's dangerous to walk East Shore.
I'm not being critical, I'm just saying that that's a whole difficult, that would be a very difficult project.
Oh, absolutely.
Because there's no shoulders, there's very little.
Oh, there's no question.
I mean, what are you going to buy everybody's house?
It'd be in the millions if I had to guess.
For a 4-foot, not a 10-foot.
But I think.
But, yeah.
You know, speaking of sidewalks, I think the board should say that, you know, that is a priority project and start at least some kind of feasibility study on a path or sidewalk along the shore, around the lake. I think we should do it. I don't know what the end game is going to be, but I think we should put one foot in front of the other with it. Take the small step.
I agree. I'll make a motion to approve. I'm sorry. Yeah, let me get the motion out first. Motion to approve the Main Street Sidewalk project as presented and authorize the project to move forward to be paid for by the current CDBG funds and future allocations.
I will support.
Ingstrom motioned and Chick supported. Mr. Docket has requested a roll call. I will start to my right. Otto?
Yes.
Ingstrom, yes. Docket?
I think we can do better. No.
Bron?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you. Takes us on to number four, the repaving of the parking lot at 75 Barker Road. Any questions?
Where's my?
Howard, do you want to fill in on the DDA on their project list, maybe?
The DDA has committed to repay, or not repaving, excuse me, restriping and seal coating the parking lot at 75 Barker. There may be some dollars in there to cut out a few sections that really need to be actually paved, repaved rather than seal coated. Ms. Griffin has received a quote for 1,600 bucks. She's asking that the Board of Trustees allocate $800 out of the general fund to pay for it. I think there's plenty of money in the budget. I would recommend that you authorize dollars to redo the parking lot at 75 Barker. I would also recommend, and if you would like, you could certainly add it, I'd recommend that if you do do the parking lot for 800 bucks at 75 Barker, that you consider authorizing some dollars from me in the future to allocate for some nice signage showing that it is a community parking lot.
Howard, is there any way in the, in the future that we could even allocate that property as community property, other than just putting signs up?
In what way?
I mean, is there, what I'm saying is, is, do we have to, it doesn't have to be zoned for that or, that's what I guess I'm asking.
No.
Okay.
No, I don't believe, I mean, I don't believe that there would be any restriction on having a community parking lot there.
Okay.
Why don't we ask little porky to cough up for 800 instead of taking it out of our money?
Why not what?
Why don't we ask little porkies to pay 800 rather than, rather than, let me finish, please, Howard. Why don't we ask little porkies to pay, you're going to give them some parking there. I would say that they should pay their fair share and leave our 800 in our general fund. Thank you.
You can ask him that question as soon as we get to it on the agenda, Mr. Docket.
Well, it'll be too far along by then. You want to vote on this now? It's kind of backwards.
Okay. Change the agenda, Mr. Docket.
Nope. We already approved it.
Thank you, Mr. Docket.
All right.
What kind of a commitment do we have to Tina Lupai there?
Wayne, we are on one, we're on just the DDA with their generous offering to contribute.
I don't see the DDA woman.
That's for the paving. The lease is on the discussion items coming soon.
Well, what happened, you mean, this, the leases, these two don't come before that?
We're talking about the repaving of the parking lot on 75 Barker Road right now.
And that's the sheet right here. Right there's the lease, is that correct? Am I out of, am I out of?
Your order, parking lot for 75 Barker.
That's the way I got the packet.
No, Mr. Docket, your packet was correct. I don't know why it's out of order today, but everybody else is in order.
No. Howard sabotaged.
So what?
I'm sorry. Mister, this is, this is just one of those meetings.
To bring you up to speed then, Mr. Docket, we are currently talking about the parking lot at 75 Barker Road. The DDA would like to have it, oh, resurfaced, thank you, and striped.
It's our, let me just say this, guys, it's our piece of property. The parking lot needs to be striped and seal coded. It's just going to continue to deteriorate. I don't care if little porkies is using it. That's a discussion later on the agenda. I don't care if Tina Lupai is using it. That's later on the agenda.
We own it, we need to maintain it.
I don't care who uses it or what it's for. We need to keep up our infrastructure.
And the DDA is gracious enough to give us.
Maybe we should paint the building if we're going to do that. There's no paint on the building, so it'd even look worse with a new parking lot. No paint.
All right. I'm willing to make a motion to approve, I'm going to say 800 to contribute towards the resurfacing and striping of the parking lot and an additional 800 out of the general fund, both of those figures are out of the general fund, to possibly upgrade some nice signage that people do know that that is public parking.
So that's 1,600?
You bet total.
All I see is 800 on there.
Nope. I went up to, I added another 800 to buy some signs. Oh, yeah, we just made a money.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, maybe double it.
I have a motion on the table. Would anyone like to second it?
I'm supporting.
Thank you. Ingstrom motioned and Chick supported. Those in favor?
I'd like to have a roll call vote.
Sure. Chick. Bron. Bron, Docket?
No.
Ingstrom, yes, Otto?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to doing that, and thank you for the DDA for participating.
And I will check with the DDA about trying to get them to split the cost of the signage as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I only threw the eight hundred on there, you know, I'm sure you won't spend all that, but I didn't want you to have to come back later for a, a hundred dollar difference or anything.
Thanks, Madam Supervisor.
Thank you.
I can't have a hundred dollar difference, make it eight.
Then that takes us to number five, which was the, uh, on the agenda item which we added, and it's just to talk about the possibility of changing our thoughts on the roundabouts. We had, um, approved the roundabouts for, uh, soft, uh, regular landscaping, and said that the township would take care of them. And as I drive around the town, um, not our township, but, um, Green Oak, um, you know, Ann Arbor, all these roundabouts that are everywhere, and the ones with the beautiful landscaping when they first come, look great, but then over the years, it just deteriorates, and no one maintains them like they should. And I was admiring the one over on, uh, Geddes Road, that it's actually like brick pave, uh, stamped concrete, colored concrete, and it looked very nice and clean versus all the weeds and, you know, this, uh, the bushes dying or getting too big, and then it's just a non-stop expense, and...
That's right, it's a non-stop expense, thank you very much.
Janet?
So, um, would we absorb the cost of the hardscaping? I mean, that, that, wouldn't the county would pay for the...
I don't know, it, it's just something I thought of and thought, you know, maybe we should talk about. I mean, Howard might be able to fill us in on there, I mean, you know, can they, they allocate the dollars that they were gonna put for the landscaping into the hardscape?
Okay, the only...
Equal money?
What I'd like to see is a comparison between what it would cost to maintain it over a certain period of time and what the cost of the hardscaping would be.
Yeah, 'cause you still have to, you still have to maintain it.
Right.
At some point, Lion Township has a hardscape in theirs.
Yeah, someone still has to spray for weeds, or, you know, but...
Yeah, somebody still has to spray for weeds, but it does, it does look good.
Yeah.
It does look nice, they have, uh, brick pavers in theirs, and it looks really nice.
Yeah. I mean, did...
Okay, M.D.O. wants, M.D.O. wants...
But do you have a figure in mind?
I, I mean, I...
It's, what do you mean, to maintain it, to maintain the hardscape?
I don't have a piece of paper, do you wanna vote on something? I don't have a piece of paper.
What are you, excuse me?
I have no idea, I have no idea what you're talking about, how much money?
Let me, let Howard finish, okay?
What's that?
Let Howard finish what he was saying, and maybe you'd understand more, okay? What are you saying, that M.D.O. needs an answer, what?
M.D.O. needs an answer, because before we were gonna do, uh, landscaping, um, on the hardscape side, it wouldn't be any cost to the township, there would be, it'd just be the hardscape and they'd build it into the project, it would just, it would be what they build. And in terms of maintenance, I mean, yes, obviously, there's maintenance for weeds, but it's significantly less, obviously, than the maintenance of landscaping. Um, I, I, unfortunately, I hate to do this, but we kinda need to decide, do we want hardscape or do we want hardscape? If we're leaning towards hardscape, that's fine, um...
We got some figures, Howard?
But if they're...
There is no figures for hardscape.
Are they just gonna put...
It's the same dollar amount.
No, are they just gonna put, um, I, I guess what I needed to know is, are they just gonna put a cement in? Is that it? And that would be the hardscape, or would there be any design to go with it?
I, I believe there's design to go with it.
Oh.
That's my question too. I mean, can we, throwing a design, or can it, you know, have like a Whitmore Lake sign, or pavers, or like stamped concrete? And, and that's what I wanna say too, is I'm all for this also.
All for hardscape? All right, how about we do this, how about you guys give me the authority to make this call? And I'll lean towards hardscape, um, and I'll make sure that we get some nice looking hardscape. And if for some reason it ends up just being like a pure slab of concrete, then we'll go, you know, we'll, we'll go with the landscaping, but let me, I mean, I think this is one where you just authorize me to make the call.
I agree with that, because who is gonna pay for the landscaping, us or them?
We are.
It was us.
They would pay for it initially.
So, if they're only gonna put a slab in, then, then we need some wiggle room. I mean, if we're gonna pay for landscaping anyway, why not pay for somebody? I don't think you should immediately scrap it then and go with landscaping, just because it's concrete.
We would just, we would, we would have to know what, what it's costing.
Yeah.
Then let's just vote on hardscape at this point, um, which is fine. And I'll do my best to make...
Are you on a relation, or just, uh, approve, change it from our case?
Just the motion to approve, change it to hardscape would be fine.
All right, I'm willing to put that motion forward, make a motion to approve hardscape versus landscaping on the roundabout that we have previously approved for M.D.O. Ingstrom motion, and Bronn supported, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those...
No.
Those opposed, thank you, motion passes.
That would only be at North Territorial, Green Oak Township already committed to landscaping at eight months.
Okay.
So, we're only talking North Territorial roundabouts.
All right, uh, let me see, takes us on to discussion items, National Staff Leasing at seventy-five Barker Road. Um, obviously, we have Howard's memo, I, I have the same, um, thought, thoughts on not a long-term lease or anything like that, um, knowing that we're soon the Van Curler property, maybe that is something that could be incorporated with it as, you know, a big plan or something, who knows, but, um, do you need anything on this? Or you're just doing a discussion item at this point?
Um, I, I would prefer a vote, and I'll tell you why, because we've, we've had a request for, uh, a one- or a two-year lease. This is my opinion that we not do that, so I'm in agreement with, uh, kinda month-to-month situation. Potentially, we could always agree to a sixty or ninety day notification, that we would provide them notification if we decided that we were gonna do any things, that way we give them a little bit of, of protection. Um, I'm in agreement, but since they've requested, uh, a one-to-two-year lease, um, this would be the opportunity for the board to say, either yes, we'll move forward with a one- or two-year lease, and if so, Brad and I will start drafting it, and if the answer is no, we wanna stick to a month-to-month, probably be best to do that as a vote of the board.
I think, I'm happy with month-to-month, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel on another lease with, you know, early term, you know, that we can terminate it, why not just leave it as it is?
It's fine.
Uh, anyone else's thoughts or feelings?
I would like to at least give her the, the option of having the longer notification of ninety days. It, it is hard, you know, if we do anything and we have to give her a notification, uh, nine, sixty days is too short a period of time to look for another lease, or even move out, or even plan to move out of a building. Ninety days is probably stretching it at max, so if we're gonna do this, at least give her, um, ninety days.
What, and the one-year lease, give her nine, or are you still talking month-to-month?
On month-to-month, that we give her a ninety-day notification if we're gonna do a month-to-month lease. Give her the, the ma, uh, give her as long as we can. I would even, I would even consider giving her, um, a hundred and twenty, but ninety days is fine.
I have no problem with that, nothing moves fast anyways.
Yep.
I have no issues with giving them three, I mean, three months notice.
Okay.
Why don't we just, uh, make that vote?
You wanna motion right now, or?
Yeah, before there's discussion.
I'll make a motion to, um, keep the current lease at seventy-five Barker Road with National Staffing lease, uh, month-to-month, and also add in that we do have to give ninety-day notice to the tenant if we plan on terminating our agreement, or month-to-month lease.
I support.
Ingstrom motion, and Chick supported, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those oppose, motion passes. Yes, Wayne?
Uh, are we, are we gonna mention anything about the offices, or is she not running any offices now, or?
She's not running the offices.
Okay, so, if we give, if we go into this, and that she wants to bring in some staffing in them offices, can we think about it, or change it, or? I know it's in here, it says that she has the option to have the two offices. The landlord also leases to the tenant two office spaces located in the fire hall, consisting of a fifty square foot each, including the right of ingress, egress.
That's a good point, you should, if you don't want that to be the case...
Maybe we should cross that off, or?
You should probably vote to remove that.
Should what?
Make a vote to remove it from the agreement.
Lisa? Can I amend that mo, or, uh? Okay. I wanna amend the motion to, uh, to remove the, um, the additional bays, the fifty... Remove from the lease, the landlord also leases to the tenant the two office spaces located in the fire hall, consisting of approximately five hundred square feet each, including the right of ingress and egress to the offices. I'd like to add that, I can send that down to you if I read that too fast for you. Removing that from the lease.
Yeah, because if she leases to somebody for six months or something, yeah, we can, okay.
And then I would, so, let's, uh, vote on this again, you guys, since we do have the amendment.
Amendment, okay.
Yep, um, those in favor, aye? Those opposed? You were in?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, great, thanks. Okay.
I think so, if I can, if I understand.
I must have got that really fast then.
Is this mine?
I think so, and here's your hand right here.
Oh, I guess it is, I don't know.
All right.
We have that broadband thing. I don't care anything about that.
Okay, that takes us to our second discussion item, which is the parking at seventy-five Barker slash Driftwood Marina.
I will try to be brief, Madam Supervisor.
Great, thanks.
Somer is in the audience, Somer, uh, Somer, if you wanna come up. Somer owns Little Porkys, um, Somer has purchased the Driftwood Marina. Um, Somer is looking at plans right now to tear down the Driftwood Marina and rebuild, uh, a new marina and bar grill restaurant in its location. I have been working and, uh, and, uh, debating and convincing, uh, Somer to do a bar restaurant in that area for about a year and a half now. So, I'm very happy about this. Um, in order to make it work, Somer believes, and I agree, that he needs additional parking, uh, particularly if he's gonna do a restaurant-type of environment. Um, I am fully supportive of, uh, using the parking lot at seventy-five Barker so that Somer can, um, uh, use that as part of his, uh, parking, uh, uh, calculations and numbers and direct signage, direct people to seventy-five Barker for parking for, uh, the restaurant bar. Um, I, uh, I don't know how that would look, I don't know what that agreement would look like. I think that obviously there needs to be a formal agreement, and I'll let Somer specifically speak to what he wants. Um, and I don't have that agreement here today, or we haven't, you know, talked about that, but I'm in full support of it, I think this is good planning, this is good economic development. It was what, you know, the whole idea of a parking lot at seventy-five Barker was always intended to be. Um, and I wanna do whatever we can to support our local business to, uh, to improve. Um, and what he's planning is, uh, a, a huge improvement.
Thanks, Howard.
Welcome.
Um, as of right now, uh, speaking with the architect, there's only room for seven parking spots at the current location. Uh, that is nowhere near enough to run any sort of bar or restaurant, so that is why I need some designated parking over at seventy-five Barker. You know, it is public parking, so I also would need, uh, designated parking, because I don't know what plans are at that seventy-five Barker that could take up more public parking away.
So, you're looking at specific signage that has your company, you know, your restaurant on it that says belongs to...
Restaurant, yes.
Isn't that the same as buying the parking spots, or, I'm, I'm just, 'cause it's, like in Brighton, for example, there's all this community parking that's used by the restaurants downtown. Why does it have to be designated? That means no one else could park there, correct? It would be parking for Driftwood Bar and Grill only, and when no one was using those spots, they would just have to stay empty, or you could have the person towed away, correct? No one else could park there.
I'm not sure about, you know, any sort of toyed away, I mean, I don't...
If there's enough community parking, how do the bars and restaurants in Brighton do it? Like, especially on Main Street, there's no parking, they have to use those community lots. And then, and then my, and that's just one question I have, and then my other question is, of course, would you have an umbrella policy or something that would cover liability?
That's something I would discuss with my attorney about that.
Details, right, but those are just my two questions.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause I would think that once we start designating areas, I would think that, and I'm gonna speak as an attorney, that I would think that there has to be some, uh, 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 coverage of insurance certificate or something, but, um, I also, 'cause I frequent, uh, Brighton a lot because I work up there, um, there are some that are designated right for those restaurants, only because they're near to the restaurants, but the ones where it's cut, you know, city property is not.
Uh, I think this is a good opportunity to, I would be all for this myself. I think it's a good opportunity for us to, uh, I, I hate to say it, but hire, hire engineers and... How much more parking can we get there? We've got a pretty good-sized lot up there, and, uh, uh, you know, if we're gonna get into this, I think we should find out what we got there, and I think we should get every lot we can get if we're gonna do something with him, uh, uh, and it's gonna have to be, can't be just temporary, we're gonna have to make some sort of commitment, so, so, uh, I, I like the idea, but, uh, I, I think it's necessary for us to know what we got there, so...
'Cause isn't there space... And I think doing the paving of the, the lot is probably appropriate, so you can determine how many lots could be fitting in there.
Madam Supervisor, one more.
Oh, you know, is there a space to expand that parking lot where the old police department, you know, like, where it's all grassy right now? So, there, there is an opportunity to grab more, right?
There is an opportunity for an expansion, potentially, um, and there's also, uh, when we, uh, when we do the repaving, uh, or, excuse me, seal coating, and, uh, when we do the restriping, I'll have the engineering firm look at it, uh, and make sure that we're maximizing the number of spaces that we can get in.
Howard, I can't hear you.
I said, when we re-stripe it, I will have the engineering company look at it and make sure that we're maximizing the number of spaces that we get in the lot.
That we have now, or?
Yes, yeah.
But I still think we should certainly look into how many, we, you know, regardless if they use it or not, we, we need as much parking downtown as we can get.
Yeah, actually, in, in truth, in fact, the, the best people to do that are the ones that, that do seal coating and striping, 'cause they, they look at parking lots every single day, they're actually better than it than, um, sometimes engineers. But I'll have both of them look at it and, and make sure that we maximize...
We'd probably need lighting and a few other things there, too.
Um, but anyway, um, all of the details of this would have to be worked out, there would have to be an agreement with the township. Um, you would have to vote on a contractual agreement, we would have to negotiate a contractual agreement. I think with Somer, um, and I think Somer should speak directly to what he's looking for, but I think what tonight is about is, are you in favor in general of that concept? Are you supportive of it? Do you want us to begin the negotiations, the specifics of the details? 'Cause you'll have to agree to that contract, uh, but we don't wanna move forward if you guys are not, uh, uh, thinking along those lines.
I would be thinking along them lines, but I don't know how many parking places you're talking about. We need to get a picture of, of what's going on, I mean, how many, how many does he need? How many does he think he needs, and are they available? Can we go?
I don't have an exact figure on how many I need, I guess that, it all depends. I do know that seven spots that are right now, that won't even cover employees.
But we have other commitments in that parking lot, too.
Yeah.
You know, for rentals and stuff like that, and we have, we have it with the, uh, the chicken people, and we, you know, other things that happen down there.
I just wanna be really clear, uh, Madam Chick, I know I'm, I'm monopolizing, I apologize, one second. Just wanna be really clear, a new restaurant and bar and a new building in downtown is a really, really big redevelopment revitalization project. We really do, I just want to encourage and implore you to see the opportunity in terms of the sort of magnitude of, uh, of, of various options when we look at various commitments like, uh, the barbecue for the Fourth of July parade, chicken barbecue.
I can speak to that.
Please.
Okay, so, to speak to the chicken barbecue for the Fourth of... So to speak to the chicken barbecue for the Fourth of July, the Kiwanis has stepped away from, uh, uh, hosting that anymore because of the, uh, aging population that's in Kiwanis because we can't find the volunteers to do it. They have stepped away from it this year, and they don't plan to take it on anymore. There are other people, you know, that are nonprofit organizations that are in the community that are thinking of taking it on. They may not put it in that specific spot, so that should be not even considered.
But we have other commitments.
Yeah, but, I mean, this is a year-round function versus one-day Fourth of July chicken. I think we could relocate them someplace.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I'm totally for it and think it's a great idea. We do need something in our downtown. Um, you know, my only concern is that we don't want to give them all that parking for too long. You know, like, we want to, uh, I think, reserve spots that are for, you know, non-Driftwood customers, you know, that anyone else coming into downtown has a place to park. And then also with the buying of the Van Curler property, um, I can envision possibly, you know, parking somewhere behind, you know, this, you know, this southern section of that, um, parcel. And maybe at that time, you know, um, Driftwood Porky's and Somer, you know, maybe would, uh, like to contribute to the cost of building the parking lot or helping out with something like that, you know, a, a partnership. Because we want you and would like to have you, but we still have to make sure that we have enough parking for everyone, but I'm totally for it.
Okay, like, my hand has gone numb. It's been like fifteen minutes.
I'm sorry. I, you know, I have, I knew you were waiting. I'm so sorry.
I have nothing earth-shattering to say. I'm, I'm, I'm happy with this conversation. I think we should be doing this. But I do want us to be mindful that if we do something with seventy-five Barker, to make sure that we're acknowledging that we might need some parking space for that as well, so, yeah.
The only thing that I would ask is, and I don't mind having the, um, giving them the reservation for it, but I would like to keep the reservation within the ti- having that signage show that there's the time that you're open. So if you're only open until, from noon until midnight, that, that people have the opportunity to use the same, um, that same, uh, parking in the morning if they have to. So, you know, that we don't limit, uh, the amount of people that could use that parking at any given time.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the hours of operation yet, but...
Yeah, I just say, I would just say, if, if you're not going to be open in the morning, just not restricted, only those spots just for you for the whole time. That we put a time in China.
There are regulations. I mean, when you're building, there's, there's code. They're going to say you need this many spots.
I think it's exempt for that area.
Depending on your size, no handicap spots.
What's that?
Handicap spots.
Not in that area. No, the, 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 the downtown, the downtown, um, uh, code is, is, uh, parking exempt.
But don't they have the ADA...
I find that hard to believe. It's not in Ann Arbor.
Handicap, you have to have handicap.
Well, I'm not saying I'm not going to put handicap spots.
Right.
I'm just saying there's seven spots up front.
No, but there, there is like, so then you're saying you're being required, though, that was how you started, that you need to prove you have designated spots, and you're saying there is no code that determines that.
Well, I think just from your...
So why then can't it just be use the community parking? You're welcome to use that. I mean, where's the hang-up there? There, there'll be plenty of parking in that lot.
Well, this is a big investment, and I need to make sure that maybe some other company comes in that spot, and their employees or whatever they do takes up most of that parking, then what am I supposed to do?
Yeah, but what are we supposed to do?
He's making an investment.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of a conundrum.
It's a big investment on my behalf, and if something changes with the parking that could be a detriment to my business and investment, I won't do it.
But it's possible that that, if we give away that parking, it could be a detriment to the community business also, right, other businesses.
Well, yeah, if you guys did anything with that property...
I mean, I'm not, I am totally for this, 100 percent. I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate so we think of all the different...
As, as a businessman, you know, I don't see investment coming into that downtown area if there is no parking.
Right.
You know, so if anything was to happen with seventy-five Barker and you guys would lose the city parking, it's pretty much kissing any business coming in goodbye, you know? Because there is no parking on the streets. There's really no parking by the water or anything like that. So, you know, parking is very important, and this is kind of why it's taken this long from when we bought the property to make a decision here. Uh, and I, me and my partner still have fears about parking. Um, even with designated parking from you guys, it, there still are some issues, you know, that, you know, that we are consider, you know, scared of.
And I'm sure all businesses thinking about locating in that area would have the exact same concerns, that they would have parking and they, they might go away, I mean...
There's no question, but there always has to be one, and there always has to be a start of a revitalization. And you don't know what's going to happen two years from now if we, let's say we do, in fact, uh, dedicate parking to the Driftwood and their redevelopment, and somebody comes in and you have another use that you would love to have that comes in, maybe there, there, maybe then at that point, there's enough desire for them to be there because there's already enough, uh, you know, uh, um, already enough, uh, activity that they buy a, a lot or an adjoining house and tear it down. The number-one thing that revitalizes small downtowns is entertainment, food, and liquor.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I mean, I, I know it sounds funny, but it's true. You want to go to Brighton, it's because you're going to drink, you're going to eat, you're going to enjoy a Saturday night. Guys, I, I, it's ultimately the board's decision, and there's a lot of things to think about, but you got an existing business that wants to revitalize the area with a strong use, that's an entertainment-focused use, which is what you want in downtown Whitmore Lake, and I, I, if there's an opportunity to help, I, I, I think it's an opportunity to take.
I agree 100 percent, and now that we have the Van, uh, the Van Curler property, it's not like we're giving away our...
And, and I agree with you, Kathy. If there's a restaurant that comes in two years from now, it's, it's going to be one of those situations where we may not have the availability to do this again. But I, I would rather take the opportunity today to look towards revitalization than to say no to an opportunity which may then not, then there's nothing creating the critical mass to make improvements.
So what do you need from us tonight, Somer?
Uh, I guess a commitment for designated parking. I would like to know how much more parking you guys could add, just, uh, whether it's designated for me or not, but just to know what is capable out there, you know? What if another business comes in, you know, or doesn't want to come in because of that lot? Just knowing that, hey, it's, let's say it's forty cars now. If you guys expand, that makes sixty, seventy, eighty cars, then I know that, you know, it could handle the growth. You know, my place could take off, it might not, but it would be nice to know that if it did take off and was very successful, the parking is available if needed.
Okay.
I think, if, if, if I can, just briefly, uh, I think just because this is so loose at this point in terms of what the, what legal shape such an agreement could take, and, you know, Howard's got a bunch of work to do to figure out what parking's available, I think at this point, just sort of a direction from the board that this is something that you'd like for Howard and I to explore with Somer is about probably as far as you could go at this point, just because we don't have...
I'd like to have you explore.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I was going to make the, uh, motion to have Howard and our legal attain to explore.
Do you need a motion, Howard?
No.
Just direction, or direction?
No.
But I wanted to make sure you guys were okay with that.
Let it over with now.
Yep.
Let's go.
Well, I'm, okay. Somer, thank you. Appreciate how you're doing, and...
Thank you.
Okay. Um, that takes us to our second call to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Come on up.
Good evening. Um, sounds great. I'm excited about what, uh, you got going on here with Somer and, uh, the, um, the Driftwood Marina and whatnot. Sounds exciting. Um, I want to go back to agenda item number three. We're talking about the parking, the sidewalk. Um, I did a little bit of walking around Emerald Circle. It's up there near, um, what was I going to say? West of twenty-three, uh, north of Barker.
Northfield Estates.
Okay. Um, some people there were saying they would like a sidewalk continued from there towards downtown.
We've been working on it.
We're working on it, so I just wanted to...
I can't hear you.
Um, I, I'm referring to, uh, some residents that I talked to in, what'd you call it, Northfield Estates, that, uh, they mentioned about a sidewalk that got started but didn't get finished that would have taken them, who a lot of them are lower-income whatnot and have bicycles and kids and whatnot, in towards downtown. So their concern was we'd like the sidewalk finished. I didn't know exactly what they're referring to, but since we're talking about sidewalks and whatnot, I just wanted to, just go ahead and add that to tonight's discussion. That's about it, and like I say, have a wonderful evening and good luck everybody who's running for, uh, trustee and, uh, clerk and all of those other fun positions, supervisor and treasurer. Good luck and have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you. Uh, anyone else? All right. Takes us to board member comments. Wayne?
You had something I know. You go ahead.
I would like to remind people to, uh, get and study your ballot. Uh, do not vote for Republican and Democrat. You can only vote for one. If you, if you mix your ballot, your ballot will be thrown away. And, uh, I would like to be able, people to study it, be part of the system. Uh, and, uh, it'll be voted one week from today. And, uh, good luck to everybody that's running. That's number one. Number two, uh, Howard Fink has moved out of the township. I could not stand the tax base here. So I just like to let everybody know that...
What was the last comment?
Howard Fink has moved out of the township. He could not stand the tax base here.
That has not...
That is totally disrespectful, Wayne. You have been out of order all night, and now you are rude and, and insulting.
Well, it was pretty rude for you to move out and not tell us, Howard.
You know, you've been wanting to move this meeting...
I moved out for everybody who would like to know, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I move, I, I live, I still live in Whitmore Lake. I live on the Green Oak side of Whitmore Lake.
Well, that's not, that's not Northville, don't you?
That's absolutely right, and it is nothing to do with...
It is Whitmore Lake, mainly, Whitmore Lake rules. Wayne, you've wa- you've wanted this meeting to move along because you're not feeling good, and we've been here a long time.
No, I just...
Okay, and we're not going to, no.
I would have thought he would let us know.
Okay. Uh, anyone else for board member comments? Yes, Jen?
So, um, I, and I'm going to read this. Um, I normally do... Turn it on. I normally do not take, uh, the township meetings for political grandstanding, but I think, um, since the Northville Neighbors flyer has been mentioned, I do, uh, feel that I need to have a disclaimer on my part. Um, the current CRGN and Northville Neighbors have endorsed my candidacy as a township trustee incumbent, um, for the next election, and I am not a member, nor do I participate in any special, uh, group. I have not asked for their endorsements. And the only reason that I am running again is because I believe in our community, and I believe that our community needs to thrive. That is the only reason. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I kind of do. I, I just wanted to speak to this that went out as well. At first, I was really upset about reading it because it is a huge, huge twist of truths. There's some seeds of truth in everything, but, um, actually, as I read through it and think, sitting here looking at it, and I thought to myself, everything on here, we've kind of been responsive to the public and everything that we've done. Um, we have not borrowed thirty-three million dollars for a sewer plant. Um, our sewer plant does not have enough capacity for our residents and our obligations, and we do have obligations out there. That's why we're talking about an expansion. It, this says we have enough. We do not. Um, we gave away six hundred and seventeen, six hundred and seventy-two thousand tax giveaway as a gift to a company for a company that's coming into our township that's going to increase, um, our viability. Uh, I, I don't understand why that is a bad thing. Tax abatements are very common when you're bringing new businesses into, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. I just want to add, the majority of that six hundred and seventy thousand does not go to Northville Township. It goes to the state and, and other taxing jurisdictions.
Right. And then six hundred thousand in added bureaucracy. Um, the previous board actually structured it so that we, they wanted a township manager. We hired Howard, and he's done things that, uh, probably our supervisor, clerk, or whoever that would have come into that place would not have been able to do without the same experience and background and knowledge. And the things he brings to this, people don't even, to our community, people don't even think of, but he has that background to know that these things are available to us, plus context that he has as well. Um, the, the fifty-two thousand dollars in pure waste was totally responsive to the community. When people came to our planning commission meetings, um, and I've been listening to them for seven, eight years now, they sat out there and they said, "I can't hear, I can't hear. The lighting's horrible." Um, it, we had to do something to make it more, um, uh, easier for the pe- people than community to participate as well. We had trouble hearing them, they had trouble hearing us, and it wasn't the mics. They kept saying we placed the mics. We got new equipment. We put in walls, we put in ceilings, we have new lighting. This is a good place for people to come and listen, and, and, and we have not had anybody complaining about it except these people. Um, the other is the sewer fund pure, or the sewer fund purely, oh, the bonds. Um, I want, I haven't seen any figure that shows that we lost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars because of the sale of these bonds. What I think they're looking at is possible future if we hung on to it. That must be the crystal ball that trustee Otto was talking about last time when we met, that, um, you know, you can't see into the future. We could lose much more than that, or less than that, or none of it, or that, but we didn't lose four hundred and fifty thousand dollars also. That Munivest company was being investigated by the FBI. The FBI actually came to this office, um, previous to this board and was asking questions about, um, the investments and because the owner was actually indicted for a Ponzi scheme. So of course we're concerned there's a risk to our public's tax dollars and, and how it's being used. So that, what we decided to do as this board is to make sure there was no risk involved in that money, and that's being responsive to our public. Everything this board has done over the last three and a half years has been in the interest of the public. Don't expect everybody to agree with the things that we do, but we certainly don't deserve this kind of garbage.
Thank you, Janet. Mr. Wagner, did you have something else that you'd want to...
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, uh, for our missing thirteen-year, or sixteen-year-old girl, we were able to find her and return her to her mother, uh, this morning, so that was good news. And then also, while we have Deputy Chief Bishop here, he doesn't like accolades very, a lot, but, uh, about, uh, four weeks ago, on his, his, uh, full-time job working for AT&T, he was working down in Augusta Township, and happened to be around the corner of a ten-year-old boy that was severely mauled by a dog and was listening to the radio, and Chris responded down in Augusta Township and, uh, was instrumental in saving that little boy's life. And, um, I think he got some accolades from his AT&T job, and, uh, just, I just wanted to recognize him for that. He, he did that. It was real nice, so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I have just, uh, something real quick. Just wanted to thank everyone who voted for me four years ago. It was a pleasure serving you. Hopefully I can have your vote again. Please remember to vote next Tuesday, August second. And also, I just wanted to clarify from one of our, uh, Call to the Public speakers, uh, his, it sounded like he, um, saying I get paid fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, my pay is twelve thousand, five hundred dollars a year, totaling fifty thousand for four years. All right? Um, and that is the, that same goes for the treasurer and the clerk. All right, um, if we have nothing else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
I know, I'm not touching it. I won't.